To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, we're expecting phone call. Rebecca Johnson, Department of Municipalities, to discuss the opening up of the businesses and so on. We talked about doing something with the county to hopefully pay the taxes. So Rebecca, she works, she does work with KDHT, that's part of her job, that she gotta work through that avenue. But we got a couple updates on things they were thinking about and we got the latest version. We're passing around a slightly different than that first one, but mainly, the main thing is talking about keeping the distance. Things in, Cricket, you might wanna be specific. I told her about your situation, how that you were going to only let a couple come in at one time, like on each end, I suppose. You've got two doors, you have one here and one here in the vicinity apart, or you're just gonna have one person in there at a time?
Well, I don't know, that's what we need to discuss on, what we want it to look like, when, I don't know what...
I thought we talked about put some chairs outside six feet apart and just not letting the one, one, one person for tags and one for, for patches. It's kind of what I was envisioning, one at a time. No?
It's kinda hard to determine, you know, with, with something out there, whether they're gonna do tags or tags.
Yeah, well, she'll have to figure that out. I did tell her that, I did tell her including the splash guard.
Yeah, I got those ordered.
You had them up yet?
No, I got them cutting there.
So, has it came yet?
No, hopefully today, tomorrow, it's been shipped, but...
Okay.
Don't let any uncontrolled splashes in the treasures up. I didn't hear what you said, don't let any uncontrolled splashes in the treasures up.
But, but are you guys gonna have someone at the door monitoring the door, or are we gonna just?
I think we're...
How are we going to?
During our conversation.
Well, I don't know, Brian, we talked about that a little bit, do you have somebody that can dedicate to that, or not?
Yeah, but according to Becky, she's saying that we don't have to screen the public, that one person that you're...
Main thing, better, she was just recommending we take our own employees' temperatures, so we can ask her about that.
'Cause the temperature thing's not a requirement anymore, it's, it is one of the, the symptoms, but it's not something you have to check.
But, but, we're not talking about checking, everybody comes in with a temperature, but she did say, yes, we take, take our own employees for, for the buyer, or for having a temperature, not the public.
Would you need somebody there so that there wasn't a ton of people coming in? That's what I guess I was wondering myself.
That's what I'm wondering, how many people are coming?
No, I, I agree with you, you know, we don't need two hundred people, whatever.
Right.
And, and they're gonna be, because, I mean, we've got tons of people needing big tagging vehicles, so they're gonna be like...
My question again, Ron, you have somebody that can do that, if we need to do that?
And I don't know, is it gonna be an all day, every day, eight to five thing? I mean, because, do you have, you have somebody that can do that every day? Do we need that, she's supposed to be calling?
We can, we can make the, we could, that's just, we can make those adjustments, no problem.
I was gonna say, do we need to start, you know, eight to noon for a while, and just let, I mean, I don't know, I'm just... Anyway, you guys are thinking what your reasons are for doing it?
We'll see what she has to say, then we'll, I kinda think the department head kinda need to make adjustments, work this out.
Don't, no, I've actually got a Bluetooth, you're just gonna speak, okay? So I'm gonna put you on Bluetooth, and then, it's right in front of you, so you'll have the commissioners, okay? Uh, thank you.
Is she good?
Yes, I'm trying to figure out.
Rebecca, or a serious example?
Hold on a second.
Parents turn, heads cross.
Are you there Rebecca? Okay, hold on a second, I'm still not got you on. Okay, now you should be there.
Yeah, I can hear you guys.
Can you hear, Rebecca, Bill, Bill King?
I'm...
Bruce signs, County Commissioner Jerry Daniels are sitting up there beside Rebecca. And, uh...
Hello?
We have some department heads, our county councilor in here, we're gonna have some questions for you in a minute, but, uh... I, I've told the commissioners all along that we get updates from you pretty often, us that are on that board. Matter of fact, we have a meeting tonight about some of this very thing. So, you wanted to start off with your, with your, uh, talk before we ask questions?
Yeah, what I've been working on, sure.
Can you all hear?
Okay, so, uh, everybody, um, has been, you know, would be getting lots of calls about, um, what is the plan? What's the plan for reopening? Um, and we are waiting, um, to find out what the governor does, because, um, just like, um, a stay-at-home order I did for, um, Bourbon County, um, it can get overridden by the governor, so, we're waiting to see what she does, because if she, um, makes something that, um, that could just override, immediately override something I do, just kind of, um, a little bit pointless at this point. So waiting to find out what she's gonna do, um, but I have a feeling it's some sort of a phase reopening, um, according to, uh, what she's been saying, and then also what, um, KDHT has been saying, and they've caught it, they've kind of, uh, made, made it kind of, afraid to stop reopening anyway. Um, and so, what we have been working on is, um, guidance documents for, um, essential and non-essential businesses. Um, and then, uh, what the plan is with that, I've written a letter and I sent that, I think I sent that to y'all, to this, or maybe it's awaited. Um, anyway...
Yes, you did.
I sent it to several people already, but, um, anyhow, the, the thing with that is, it kind of explains, um, depending on what the governor decides to do, um, we will be, um, providing guidance for this, and for business, and then there's that document with it. And we put it on our website, and, um, people can go to that and either print it off themselves or just look at it. Or if they have any questions, um, they can call us, and they need, if they're not able to get on there, then we can print it on for them and mail it to them, or they can stop by and take it back. So that's kind of gives, um, an idea of what they should be doing. It also gives, um, a place where, um, they can purchase, um, those, uh, those items. Um, key industries in Fort Scott have started making cloth masks, and I did speak with them this morning, 'cause everything just kept happening really quick. It's like, um, having this, this doc and everything, excuse me. And so I just, I, I made sure this morning, I talked to Ryan Thomas over there, um, that it would be okay to go ahead and tell, um, our other three counties that we serve, um, that they are, um, in production of these, of these cloth masks. And we said that would help their businesses out, too, they have, there are few large businesses, um, that have that for years, but, so that'll kind of help, help them out, too. Um, so, and then talks about other places you could buy, um, uh, personal protective equipment such as, um, other kind of mask or gloves, and then also sanitation products. I'm sure there's other places, I mean, the, the ones that I, that I put on there are the ones that, that just, uh, the ones that come to mind anyway. Um, so there's that, um, then I have sent it to the paper, uh, so I'm hoping it runs, I don't, um, you all, uh, Allen County's paper runs on, uh, there's a Wednesday paper, so I sent it to them, and I sent it to my other four counties to hopefully get it run in the Wednesday paper. Some of them I don't, I don't think maybe have a, a once-a-week paper, so, anyway, we'll see what happens with that. Uh, and then I'm also gonna put it on our Facebook, I'm gonna try to get it onto the radio, and, and let them know that way, because not everybody is, um, will, will see the paper, not everybody will read Facebook, so, and, anyway, that's, um, that's that. And then, um...
Rebecca?
I know Bruce had asked, oh, sorry.
Just one thing, Iowa Register is here, too, they're a daily paper, I did give them that press release, is that what you're talking about?
Um, yes, I sent it out, because I...
To the Iowa Register? Iowa Register, too?
I sent it to Vicky Moss at Iowa Register.
Okay, that's it.
See if she sent it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, um, and so, hopefully the one I sent up, because...
All right.
Because, uh, I did put on there, I did add on there that, um, where you can find it on our website, just in case people are like, wherever it is, you know? That way they know exactly where to go.
The Humboldt Union did not get one, that was the other paper in the county, so, that everyone...
Oh, I didn't know they had one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a, that's a weekly paper, too.
It's called the Humboldt Union.
Humboldt Union, yes.
Okay.
I can give you the email address if you want it.
Rebecca, he can give you that email address if you want, now I want to pick up, we'll come here, Nick, uh, just a second, Rebecca, we'll, we'll, we'll come back to this.
Yeah.
Okay, this is Nick from the Humboldt Union, go ahead, Nick.
Uh, the email address is real simple, it's all lowercase, thehumboldtunion@yahoo.com.
All right, I will send that to you as soon as I get off of this call with you all.
Okay, thank you, okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you, go ahead now.
Also, I did tell me, 'cause I didn't realize they had a paper, so I'm, anyway, um, then, uh, Bruce had asked, um, about the how government is not covered in this plan. I know we've had discussions about, like, the courthouse and everything, and how, uh, those kinds of businesses need to be run in different, uh, uh, protocols they should have. Um, now, do you all, for the courthouse or, you know, government, um, do you, do you all get guidance from, like, like federal guidance or anything?
Not that we're aware of, but...
Just those same mills?
Nori, you know, through home and security and, yeah, but...
And KAC, Tri-City and stuff.
Well, um, in my letter that I wrote, um, about, uh, like, certain organizations, um, they should fall back to their, um, their facility protocols, like according to, like, PDC, KDHT, or CMS guidelines. Um, so if you have those guidelines, um, then I would fall back to those, um, on what they, what they recommend that you do. Uh, and otherwise, I can add that if you want me to, but I think there's, there's, I know there's always gonna be loopholes, and you're like, what about this? What about that? Um, so, I would fall back to that, and, but if, um, if you do have any questions, you're more than welcome to give me a call, um, and we can discuss it, or whatever, what kind of do you think, um, or, on what kind of guidance do you need for, um, do you...
So the best, the best bet, uh...
Our office or whatever.
The best bet for our department heads, Rebecca, would be to go to, like, the KDHT website and look up protocols for operating their offices, as far as how many people, and cleaning and what have you. Is that right?
Okay.
Is that correct?
I would say so, um, and then I know, uh, KDHT is, um, they, they, they're updating their website all the time, so I do know that they can go in there and it tells you, um, how to do, uh, certain things like that, so, um...
But you don't have any suggestions that, that you can make, that, you know, what we talked about?
Well, I've already given, I've already given some suggestions, but, but I mean, I can, um, I would, uh, I think it probably just depends on, I mean, are we specifically talking about the courthouse?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I, what I would say is, is have you, have you already gotten any of these, um, plexiglass, um, uh, guys, kind of like screens? Anything like that?
They're ordered and they should be here in, any day.
Okay, great, okay, so that will, that will set a barrier, uh, between the, um, person working and then your customer, so that's really good. Um, um, there will be, um, I would say fall back onto, you know, cleaning protocols, and, you know, when people leave, uh, making sure you're wiping down surfaces, wiping down doors, um, uh, keeping your six-foot distancing, uh...
Well, one more thing, you mentioned that they're taking temperatures of employees, but not the general public, right?
Sure, yes, uh-huh.
And the masks would be a good idea for employees?
You can, but if you're not having, I mean, if you're not really having that much close contact that he was kind of updating.
Well, the splash guard will put a barrier in there, too, so, I guess we're just sharing that, that's kind of what we were thinking about. Uh, maybe keeping people out in the hall, uh, six feet apart, like having chairs out there for, we're gonna let them rest the offices. We're gonna have fourteen people in there, just one or two at a time. We've got two or three department heads sitting here shaking their heads. We kind of talked about this, they kind of wanted to hear it from you, even though I relate to, they didn't believe me, but...
Well, that's, that's something you can do, depending on, on what, what you're able to do. Uh, but also, you need to be, uh, putting some kind of communication, I would say, on the front door or something, uh, or the window, uh, saying, uh, if you, uh, are running a fever, or you feel like you're having symptoms of, uh, COVID-19, or, you know, uh, uh, or you're feeling ill, um, please, uh, uh, please maybe either go out to your car and call, or, um, please return at a later time. Um, and that's, um, that's some guidance that is in that, um, document, um, that you can have, and, uh, let's just see, I'll pull one up here, and... This is like, uh... This is customer protection, um, this is, uh, this for retail, um, like no employee has a fever, um, or other symptoms of COVID-19 will be allowed to work in the store. Um, you can kind of adapt, um, uh, the courthouse to this, um, scenario. Um, and then limit your number of, of, of people inside, um, inside each, um, space. Um, door entrances and exits will be sanitized at least three times a day. Customers will be encouraged to use hand sanitizer on entrances, that might be something that you put out. Uh, customers will be encouraged to wear face mats, uh, to prevent spreading the virus, uh, the store, yeah, there it is. Encouraged to provide access to hand sanitizer and trash receptacle. Store employees will be, uh, enforced in social distancing, at least sixty between customers. And doors with higher traffic will mark spaces six feet apart, uh, like a sales register is an outside entrance, so that would apply to the courthouse. Uh, so, I mean, you could, you could make, you, if you meant, if you can use your, you know, be creative and figure out, um, how you're gonna space people, like putting a line on the, on the, on the ground, like Walmart or something, you know, like in your checkout area. Uh, or putting a chair there, because I can imagine, you know, I don't know how long it takes for each, um, people to wait at certain offices there at the courthouse, but you may have people that aren't able to stand for a very long time, so it might be something to think about with a, with a chair somewhere available. Uh, but those things also need wiped down, too. Um, sales registers will be located six feet apart, uh, employees, uh, will take reasonable steps to comply with guidelines on sanitation from the Centers for Community Control, um, and PDT, uh, and, uh, and then it kind of goes from there. So you can apply, you can apply that to, uh, to the courthouse, and there's, I mean, there's lots of, um, parts of that that would, um, be...
So...
That would work well, I would imagine.
Rebecca, one thing that the department heads had asked about, and we're thinking of, of, um, how to, um, limit or just police the number of people total milling around in the courthouse. And I see a figure in your, in your report, the number of people inside a store will be limited to fifty percent of fire marshal capacity, or eight people per thousand square feet, is that a general rule of thumb for, for government buildings, too?
Um, I'd have to check on that, let me get back with you, um...
But, so if we have the six-foot spacing and allow a limited number, two people in an office, if that's what the space allows? I'm just wondering about...
Yeah.
Whether ten people at a time are milling around in the courthouse, or fifty is okay? And if, if there's just some guidelines that our sheriff department, our department heads could use, um, to determine that, okay?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna be looking that up and see if I can get back with you on that.
All righty, the, the number I'm getting is just, um, on the first, general guidelines to protect employees and customers, and on the inside page of that cover, there's customer protective measures, and that's just that general number I'm getting, so...
Yeah.
It would make sense, fifty percent of fire marshal capacity, you're not gonna be too crowded.
And then two, this is going to depend on, uh, this phase reopening, if, if this is what the governor is deciding to do, because if, uh, if she's saying that there's no more than ten people in a space, or like, a gathering, or, um, you could put that towards the, uh, certain areas that you are working as well. Uh, and then, that's, from what I've seen, at least on the guidelines for opening up America again, for what the White House or President Trump has, the first phase looks like, um, ten or less, and then the next one looks like, um, up to thirty. So, it's, just a lot of this kind of depends on what the governor decides to do.
Okay, but, but us as an essential office, we can go ahead and open the courthouse independent of what the governor says, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, but just with certain guidelines, the department heads, Cricket, does that kind of answer your question? Do you have something else specific to ask her?
I don't, no, I don't have anything specific to ask her.
I think, I think your splash guard is, is part of, part of the trick for you.
That, and the, the guidelines here that we've got, we can go over those later, brother, they're pretty clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I don't have any...
That's just new stuff that we just got, so we, we can share that with you, maybe share it in case you have a copy or something, but, uh, okay.
So just, um, and I know Rebecca, that we're, we are waiting to see what the governor does, and your work depends a lot on what comes down from the state, but, um, it is correct to assume that there will be a phase in, so, you know, even for, beyond our county operations, for business owners and things like that, they can just be looking for, um, mandates or guidelines or whatever to come from the state? How do you expect that to, and, and I'm not holding it in any timeline particularly, but, but, um, do you anticipate a phase in like we're seeing with other states do?
I believe so, because, uh, Governor Kelly said she, I haven't got to check to see what Colorado is doing, but, um, she said she'd be working with, uh, the governor of Colorado and Missouri, um, to kind of be something, I would think, similar. Um, so, because we're, you know, uh, neighboring states, and Missouri is, they've announced this morning, I can't remember what date it was, because I, I just watched it briefly as I was, um, walking out the door, um, but they are supposed to be doing, uh, working in their phase one and phase two. Um, I believe either later for this week, or maybe even sooner? Um, I'd have to see, and I'd have to go back and see what it says, um...
You know, Oklahoma's already started that.
Yes.
Right.
She didn't mention, no, working, working with Oklahoma, I didn't believe, but I, I remember her saying, um, uh, Colorado and Missouri, so, um, I know Oklahoma did, did things a little bit faster, so...
And, and you would issue press releases as we know more and more on that road, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Jerry, any questions for her?
No, no, thank you, Rebecca.
Uh, Jamie?
No.
Cricket, anything else? Sherry? Good, the department has a chance, if they've got some, so, counselor, you got anything to ask her? Ron, you good? Mitch?
Good.
Sheriff? Okay, does the press have any questions they want to ask her, while, while she's still here?
Uh, I checked with Vicky, she had not received that email from her yet.
Did you hear that? The, the...
Well, let me go back.
Okay. Iowa Register has not received it.
I haven't, I, well, it's because, um, I, I do have it written out, I just didn't send it yet, that's right, um...
Okay.
Because I was sending, I said to, um, see a Crickie, and, uh, CFC, and I'm working on, um, uh, because I was gonna let them, give them a heads up, but she, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, it's not a problem, kick it out.
I've been on the phone, Elmo.
I gave, I gave them a copy of that press release that we got from you this morning, but...
Okay, well, that's, that's not the one I was gonna send, and I, I apologize, I, I've been on the phone since, since I got here, so...
That'd be fine, just kick it to them in a little while, if you don't mind. All right, any other questions, we have a visitor here.
What is the red side?
Nothing I was, you know, bringing up, so, if you don't mind, um, I, I did see something, uh, brought up about, um, uh, a letter, um, and about sharing about the, um, ages of death of the person, um, I mean, this is not specifically aimed towards the, the Health Department, um, but we did hear when, um, Bourbon County had its first only vet, um, it was Elmo's man. And then if you go onto the KDHT website, um, you can find that, um, now, because they have updated it, um, through the death summary, and it talks about, um, the, the teenage age, the youngest age, the oldest age, and then it, um, male, female, and then age, different age groups and, um, ethnicities, so that was something I was gonna add to, but, anyway, that's, that's all I have, and I, I apologize, I thought I sent it to the, to the paper, but I got it in.
Okay.
But I'm trying to make sure I, I have everybody notified before I publicly, you know, post this out for everybody to see.
Rebecca, we appreciate your time, I think department heads are, are satisfied, but this group meets once a month, matter of fact, we're meeting tonight. Just to give them a little background on what you do, Rebecca, there's two, there are one county commissioner from each county and two volunteers, Jean Barker and, uh, Nick Lowman are representatives from Allen County, so we meet frequently, get updates from her, and we try to pass that along to the appropriate people, but Becky's had a lot going on, on lately, as you can imagine, she's got a lot on her plate, so, uh, but she's been good to take calls. We text and communicate about daily, don't we, Rebecca? My, my wife, my wife started to get nervous about me talking to another woman so much after hours and stuff. I'm joking. Uh, so, anything else, guys, before we let her go? Rebecca, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And, and we'll be in touch.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, safe to save me at the meeting, thank you. Mitch? What you got for us? You don't wanna make us mad, or anything?
No, Terry Johnson needs to roll over fifty-one hours of vacation, so you can put it in the red bowl when you guys get time. So, on that, it's like, you know, it's my head out, like we're supposed to, all that good stuff, so, I just pray that any guys can sign it later.
Breaking most of somebody?
On that, so, on that, so...
One favor? All right, bye.
Terry Johnson.
What have you got for us, Mitch?
About it, patches, puddles, quit raining. They're gonna stop.
Storms tonight, you would expect that?
Yeah, if it's raining, yeah, they're ready, they're ready, so, hopefully miss all that, so, the worst part of it.
I, um, did kind of a survey Saturday, ran around, and, um, went on the area where the bypass, that we've been talking about, you know, trying to keep traffic off, and did not see...
Don't bounce, so...
And I saw the signs posted, yes, up there.
That's always been called western...
So, there was not a vehicle on that road.
Yeah.
Just me.
Oh, you took West Virginia, yeah, yeah. You know, the first there, too, there was, Ron, if you had any real issues up there, I, I've run that road quite a bit, too, and I think they're getting to work.
Yeah, they are, yeah, they are.
Highway patrol's here. I, I think they've done it, but, I, of course, you know, there's gonna be a big truck go to the motor store. I mean, there are some legitimate reasons to be out there, but that first there, too, they beat the heck out of it, but I haven't noticed that lately.
Yeah, it's calm way down.
You guys have been up there beating it up pretty, pretty hot, and I'd be so keeping it right out.
Good, good.
We're still getting the cars, but mainly is the truck was the issue.
Yeah, well, Anderson County's probably in the same issue.
Yeah, and they will, the whole, the whole project. You find out about?
I haven't found out.
Okay, let me know when you do.
Okay, I'll do that, so...
Anything else?
Uh, some guys, I think, uh, Cora, they got their, well, I guess he left, but their, their puddle machine they got in, they're gonna do a little training on that today, I've sent some guys over there. One o'clock, if it ain't raining, if not, we'll do it tomorrow.
Good, so, are you finding any information out yourself?
Yeah, we're finding some stuff, so, we're gonna go look at there, see how it works, and we'll go from there, so, on that part, that's all I really have.
All right, thanks, Becky, Mitch. Comments? Jerry? Nothing, you heard, you heard what you needed to hear? Uh, Sherry?
I was just gonna, kind of mentioned that if you guys do open the courthouse up, if you keep it on the north side, you've kind of been wanting to do that, you know, eliminate it down to one entrance?
Well, we have something that we need to do.
We need to talk about that, um, if the governor allows a soft opening, or doesn't continue the stay-at-home order passed, uh, Sunday, which is, I think, the third, are we, are we, is anyone opposed to reopening the courthouse on Monday?
May fourth?
Mm-hmm. And following the guidelines, we get copies of this to everybody from the Health Department, uh, which Bruce touched on. I don't know, our sign on the door, um, does it include the fever or other symptoms? I think it does, if not, we can...
I don't think, I don't think it does, I think it includes where they come in, I think they've got that, but not...
The document here, we can include this statement on there. The document here, we can include this statement on there.
Oh, yeah.
For, for reopening.
Yeah, I think they have that down on this end, we just don't have it on that, they do other stores, it basically just says use the north door.
Yeah, I, I don't think it hurt to just limit them to the one door for now.
That's fine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for now.
Um and then the uh, you know, it says eight customers per thousand feet, I don't, you know, and I'm probably even going less than that, just limiting the, the access. Um if you have too many people in the hallway or in the office, ask them to step outside. Um and the courthouse deputy can assist with that. I think the power suggestion, you know, if we have chairs out in the hallway, extend the length of the hallway, you know, every six feet and if we. Yeah, place, or place the chairs ten feet apart uh with that power suggestion. And following the guidelines here, uh hand sanitizer uh posted with uh anybody with a fever, employees uh says that employees may be allowed to wear masks and gloves, so if you, if you, some employees want to.
Absolutely, if they want to, absolutely.
Um always practice the social distancing of six feet, washing hands frequently, uh having, we have plenty of crash receptacles.
Do we have plenty of floor off floors?
I guess I've seen it at that area last week, don't get me wrong, I have to keep it up here, but uh where you guys?
Call in areas and entrances and exits, you know, sanitize three times a day, so if we follow those guidelines, um and opening on Monday, Cricket, you're probably gonna be the, the busiest office. Let's, let's talk about suggestions, opening eight to five or limited hours.
Well, that's what you guys, I'm, I'm.
What, what do you suggest?
You guys suggest, because I don't know, do Brian have enough staff to have somebody there every day all day long, full time? I mean, they're not, they're not doing half days, but I think.
We make, we'll, we'll drop back to you, I'll make adjustments, it's just a part of just.
Well, we have a, a deputy assigned to the courthouse, so it shouldn't be an issue.
And my office has been doing eight hours, just some in the morning and some in the afternoon, so I don't know if you wanna exposure.
I think if we have the courthouse open eight to five, we're, we're less of a chance of congestion.
To have a stampede.
And then I'm okay with whatever you decide to do, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, well, if everybody else can do it, then I think, you know, Ron, um and, and the sheriff's department. Is, is there any way to check on our um, our splash shields, if they're being shipped or we gotta?
They've been shipped, they're shipped Friday.
So, so you think they'll be here this week?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be great, we can get those set up and if there's a soft opening or the, the, the stay-at-home order is not continued, I'm, I'm okay with opening the courthouse. With all these conditions uh to a single entrance for normal business.
What about taking employees' temperatures? I mean, you mentioned some last week about office heads doing it, or I mean, are we going to do that, are we?
If you got that little gun, how, how this, it's not difficult, I mean, it's not like you stick a thermometer in your mouth or your skin out.
Well, but I mean, are you gonna have the office heads do it, are you gonna have whoever's at the door do it?
Would, would that be that hard for your manager door to do the employees if they come through, love, they come through the same door?
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say, I can, I can gather up keys, but almost every, every employee right now probably has a key to this courthouse.
Let's, let's not make that any more complicated, and I think doing it within off. I think doing it within offices will be the simplest way, so whether you do it or you're a designated person or a couple of people taking each other's temperatures.
Are you comfortable with it?
The guideline is no employee who has a fever or other symptoms of COVID will be allowed to work, so the, checking the fever every morning, I think is gonna be um wise for you guys.
I'm not uncomfortable with doing it, but is that, makes sense having them even walk of the way up there. Walk into, clear up to my office, if they've got a fever, they already.
We've instructed employees to start using that door, not coming in any of the other doors, I'd love to share, tell them one or one deputy that wanna come through.
Well, the, the guidelines does not specifically require that you take temperatures of employees.
Initially with COVID, that was one of the big key factors was the fever, the next amount of days, that has just now become one of the symptoms. So if they have respiratory or other issues along with the fever, then that becomes an, an issue, a concern. So one of the pre-screenings before was the temperature, now it's just become one of the ailments, so to speak, so it's not, even if they have a fever and they have no other issues with COVID, respiratory, this, that, the other, that doesn't mean they have COVID, you see what I'm saying?
If they have a fever period, they should be coming to work.
Well, exactly.
It's pretty simple.
And we've all been working here, you know, for a month, you know.
Exactly, so I, I don't think it's uh mandatory, I think the department heads, if you wanna take temperatures.
Hopefully we can emphasize on our employees are.
You just make it explicit to.
To know if you don't feel good, stay at home.
Make it explicit with the number one item on the list from the health department, the sign posted not only to employees, but also to customers. Any individuals who have a fever or any s- other symptom should not enter, just make that perfectly clear. Okay, and but I think this is listed number one as a customer protective measure. One thing that we're wanting to do with opening the courthouse safely is instill a idea to the public that we're doing what we need to um and I'm looking with you, I'm gonna single you out.
That's fine.
But we're doing what we need to keep them safe too, and taking temperatures to me, once a morning, isn't that big of a thing and and it's gonna help our employees and it's gonna let the public know that they're safe coming here and uh I don't wanna get hysterical about the guidelines that I, that I haven't been, but um I think this is listed there for a reason, so if at all possible, we can take each other's temperatures, I think it's a good idea.
And I don't have a problem with that, I don't have a problem with taking temperatures, I mean, I'm just, who's gonna do it?
Right.
That's my question, if I'm gonna do it, I'll do it, I don't.
And do we have a machine that, you know, temperatures?
Yeah, but you, you only have four, right? That's, there's more offices than that, I guess, is what I was thinking.
We can put you up here and put them in.
Sure.
Bob, are you gonna make a comment? No.
I mean, it's wasn't easy, it's just everybody comes to the north door and when you come in.
Yeah, if you have a single entrances.
Temperature, they can have sheriff's office, it seems pretty simple.
My, my people, some of my people are here at seven o'clock, five o'clock, I'm already happy.
Well, you might have to run them back around, let the sheriff check them out before I think they're here.
Once they get to the back room, get it checked.
I'll just give you. I can give them myself, I don't trust me, fine. I don't have a problem with that.
There's gonna be some of that, don't you have any job a little bit?
Can't overcome.
I'm sure our department heads.
My, my main questions for opening is the hours and how are we going to set people apart and you know, we're gonna put chairs out, which is fine, I, because I agree, there's gonna be a lot of elderly people and different people who can't stand for a long time. Those are gonna have to be sanitized throughout the day, you know, so we need to make sure. Them as they get up to pull up, so are we gonna have enough chairs? Are we gonna have enough wipes to have sitting on for people, I'm just, that's, those are my questions.
Okay, look at Ron, go ahead, is there some way we could set some, some wipe things up there or for people to use them and?
And I've got some, I'm back ordering right now, I haven't been out to Walmart, but I do want to, they still they have.
Well, good luck there.
I know, my supplier's got some orders, but that can't yet, that's been two weeks.
Cricket, I, I see us starting this out Monday, and you may have to change that up a couple times, y'all are satisfied with it. Start it out this, this way and we can adapt and adjust as we go along, but I think eight to five, I think Bruce was right about that. I don't think you're gonna get, get the slug of people at one time if you spread them out all, all day, so agree?
Yeah, I, I.
Sherry mentioned something else two minutes ago, and then we'll zero in on that. You know, I, I'm not saying you're gonna work your people maybe during this first phase all day long, you still may wanna work hard over here and park the night there or something to give a little bit of a, of a break, not a break so much, but to pull a, a little, a little distance between some of this, I think you still got some latitude there.
If possible, I think shift work is, is a pretty good idea, that way if somebody, heaven forbid, does get sick, then not everybody in a, in a particular office has been affected by it, so that again, that's up to you guys and, and whether you even can or not. But if you can have two and two or three and three or whatever the office looks like, um it's something to think about. I think that's a good idea.
I know she doesn't wanna wear masks and I'm not asking, but my question being, do we have masks if the employees wanna wear?
We do, we do, Brian.
We, we better have masks.
He better.
I hope we do.
So if you need masks, just contact the sheriff.
Okay.
I don't think it's hurt, if you want to, I just don't think we need to make it mandatory, but if you want.
Right.
Then I think that's an option. So what else?
Anybody opposed to opening on Monday? Any, anybody not feel comfortable with it?
I think the one thing you haven't addressed, are you going to limit the amount of people, you, you really haven't made a decision about that.
How many is in the courthouse at one time?
Like ten customers maximum at a time, five.
Some of them may go to Cricket's office, some may come to mine, I mean, Turkey Tag, uh applying for, I mean, we're taking
We have a fire marshal capacity for the building.
Tend to seem, Tim seemed a little small for a bigger building than this is to me.
The only one that I know of with a fire marshal, and that was years ago, and that's that limit right there for this room.
I don't think we should have more than two per individual office. And I think that would be a good number to go with, um.
Just have the sheriff's office monitor it, two at a time per office.
Per office and, and uh if, if other people assemble, I hope, you know, this, this is not new to any of us. People need to understand that they may have to wait outside for a few minutes until the numbers.
But if you're putting chairs down, up and down the hallway, then are you gonna fill all those chairs at one time and, you know, that's why.
Well, you're, you're gonna have to direct some of your customers, if, if three people walk inside.
Allow people in to the courthouse, are you gonna go, okay, the chairs are all full, that's it, we're done.
Okay, this guideline says eight people per thousand square feet, what is the square footage of the courthouse? Does anybody have a round?
I think you have to, I think you have to determine how the square footage of the hallway.
Well, Cricket, let's take your office for example, how many people do you, how many customers do you want in, in your office at a time?
Well, I could do three.
You want three people, you want one in there and two waiting in the hallway? You want, we want two at a time? No, customers.
In my office at one time, I could do three people, three customers in my office at one time.
And keep them six feet apart.
Mm-hmm, and I could do two in mine and put kind of a divider in the middle and just leave both doors open. And, and I would leave the doors open so people aren't touching them, but.
I would block most of the doors open, if, if at all possible.
Well, let me reword that, two vehicle customers and one tax customer, and then I could keep them six feet.
So probably on the average, you'd have two customers in there at a time, if, if, if you think they're getting crowded and there's a third waiting at the door, ask them to sit in the hallway till one's done.
But I'm visualizing that's what the chairs are for, that people would know that they need to sit in the chairs and wait for the, you know, we can put a sign on the door, no more than three customers.
Or whatever you prefer, no more than two, whatever it is.
But.
You may have a county clerk customer and then they're gonna come to your office afterward, and if you've got two inside, you, that's all you want, ask them to wait outside till you're done with the next customer, this is, this is pretty easy, um directing people to wait outside.
I, and that's fine, I, you know, as far as me directing my office and having people sit outside, it's how many people are actually going to physically be in the courthouse at a time.
Two, two per individual office.
I was gonna say, for the signs, you know, we don't have to make them like this size, Terry can print us, sorry, Terry, Terry can print us some pretty good sized signs so that, you know, people will be able to see them and stuff.
Well, the new sign that we print, the, the number one requirement with the, the uh individuals' fever or symptoms should be in pretty bold letters, um that should be pretty clear to everyone.
And I can email you some of those that um.
Ten just seemed like a pretty small number, big of the area that is up there.
Yeah, well, maybe ten for like Cricket's office, I mean, but like, I probably wouldn't have more than one or two at a time, but the other thing you're gonna have to address, are you gonna figure that husband and wife are one person? Just saying, because I mean, there's a lot of places that says no, but.
I don't think so.
In my office, it depends on how.
It's, it's individuals and if a husband and wife come in to pay for tax, and if you only want two people in there, the next person's gonna have to wait in the hallway. It's very.
They're gonna stand next to each other.
And there can be some of that stairs, there can be some coming downstairs too, to the attorney's office and whatever, so not, ten of them not all gonna be upstairs.
Pretty.
Well, if the court doesn't open up, I don't think you're gonna have to worry about the attorney's office.
Probably, probably just talking about the county.
Upstairs.
Courts.
Mrs. Office downstairs, attorney's office, people come to that too, no?
They've not.
They're part of the court.
Yeah, they've been doing what the courthouse, so now extension has been down here, I think Carla's down there now, but.
I don't know, you guys wanna put a hundred, then make it ten, it doesn't matter to me.
How many do you normally have when you're not?
That was exactly what I was gonna ask.
A year, a year ago, the week before.
On the last day of the month, I can have people standing clear down the hallway at the door. And that's not six feet apart. Yeah.
So you're having fifty, fifty people?
They're this far apart, clear downstairs.
Fifty people?
Could be.
Like taxes are.
And taxes are.
Well, and that, and that's fine, but things are different now, they're, they're gonna have to wait outside, they're gonna have to wait outside until the two customers in your office are done.
I can control my office, and I don't have a problem with that, it's just, I'm just trying to visualize what the courthouse is gonna look like.
You wanna just keep a seven, ten, ten in the house.
I'm okay with ten. That'll average about two per office, hopefully.
Keep, keep it simple, ten at a time, Brian, did you hear that? Ten at a time.
I don't think it matters if they're waiting at the door or waiting in the hallway, they can wait at the door, everyone needs to be understanding about this.
Ron will put some chairs in the hallway.
And I have a, quite a silly question, we get papers, people bring papers to us, constant, it surely doesn't live on paper.
It what?
Doesn't virus.
Sure does.
But what you, what you do is you take that paper, put it in the microwave, the way somebody did some money the other day, trying to save, I'm joking, and it caught fire, you know.
If, if, if it were me with the, with the, the splash guards we have, I pro, I wouldn't wear masks, I would probably wear gloves if I'm handling cash, checks, paperwork, um but that's.
Right? Do we have gloves?
Yes, yeah, we have the box in our office.
And, and you know, if you, if you handle, which handling money or using the door handle between um a store and my car, I don't put my finger in my mouth. Until I get in my car and I swerve a little hand sanitizer on there, so if your employees are handling paper, which they will, you know, just good common sense hygiene practices that we've probably become more acutely aware of now, but good stuff anyway, and um, and I think you guys will be great.
We have plenty of works and things, I sanitize after the customer and, yeah, we kind of are.
You know, something I visited with Rebecca, or had in an email with Rebecca, and this is putting the carters for the horse, and we don't need to spend any time on it, but it is something I think that we can think about, is the new normal. Um with nine eleven, we started taking shoes off at the airport, and now we, we do that common practice twenty years later. So now, you know, splash guards might be part of our reality everywhere we go, just.
Name very obvious.
Good hygiene, like handling papers and using sanitizer, might be something that somebody wants to do from here on out, and I don't think that's a bad thing, I don't think we need to uh cram our style per se, and I'm hoping that this soft reopening and and uh the way that we're gonna ease into this thing, it's, it's gonna help, help seem like a seamless transition, and I think we're on a good start. Well, with, with changes and everybody's patience, you know, we can, we can get this and get back to business.
Okay. You may find your gloves complicate the issue, I've read several things from CDC and, and others that that once you put on your gloves, it's just like having your hands exposed and it may be a better practice, or maybe it's effective practice to just sanitize.
If you touch each glass with every piece of paper.
Yeah, you don't, you don't.
If you touch your face with a contaminated finger or contaminated glove, it doesn't matter.
The glove, glove just is a carrier, just like your skin is, and it doesn't, so far, all the research says it doesn't come to your hands, so.
It, it comes back to what Bruce mentioned earlier, if you use gloves, those gloves come off and then you wash your hands. If you use your hands, you don't touch your face, you go wash your hands again, uh hand soap's gonna be.
Someone said something about even with the gloves, use a sanitizer with the gloves every time you do it, I mean, I don't know whether that works or not, but that was a suggestion there.
What I have seen is all of our hands are raw, becoming raw from washing so often, and that sanitizer is drying, that if you have any open.
Okay, I, I think we'll pull this off, I think a little common sense, that's what we need to do, common sense, uh and we'll see how it plays out, if we're gonna try to open up on Monday, that is coming Monday.
Now, if, if for some reason uh we get a different direction from the governor's office or say our splash guards. or say our splash guards don't show up, um, if we need to have a special meeting on Friday to, to clarify or change direction because of something out of our control, uh, we can do that. We should know, uh, by the end of the day, if the governor's gonna change or.
Okay, good for you guys.
Along the lines.
Everybody, Brian?
Having expanded on what Bruce said, our new norms, uh, a few years back, it brought up maybe permanent barriers between, that's something maybe we need to think about in the future instead of.
Well, we, we talked about that, uh, a few years ago from a security standpoint. Um, in the clerk's office, treasurer's office, president, all the, dealing with customers having that, similar to what district court has, um, splash guards we're getting, I would assume, you know, I would look at them as a, a temporary item, but we probably oughta look at, um, not only security, but, uh, health. That's where the, um, one entrance came from too, wasn't it, was security rather than health. That's, that's, we can use this as kind of a catapult to further discussion. Something to look at, uh, on a permanent basis.
All right, we're gonna move on, anything else, press, Richard, Mitt, Terry?
Yep.
Okay, everybody's had their chance, if you can signify, all right, we're gonna move on. Uh, what else we got, any other business?
Well, I'm gonna talk to you about my election budget.
Okay, an open session or a technical session?
Um, it could be open, I don't care. Um, one of the things that, um, when we do, when I'm going to be able to do a all male ballot for August and November, that is a definite no way, no how from the secretary of state's office. However, with that being said, they are talking about sending out applications to each of the voters, and they are talking about doing it, they said if we do it, they'll probably try to reimburse us, but there's no guarantee that they would, okay?
What would this notification be?
This notification would be to say, hey, if you wanna advance vote, here's the application, fill it out for the primary, fill one out for November, okay? And you mail those out.
From today?
It's not, except that I don't mail out to people, they just call us and say, hey, do you wanna?
You, you mail out on, on request?
We mail out on request, but right now, if that's not something you normally do, and you do a mass mailing, they will reimburse you on that. Maybe, they're still discussing that. So, do I go ahead and do that, do I wait? Here's the, okay.
What's the, what's the difference, or you're gonna tell us?
Yeah, okay, in November, uh, or August of two thousand and eight, we had eight thousand two hundred ninety-one voters, only two hundred and eight, two thousand two hundred eighty-four voted, that was a primary, okay?
I mean, voted, I'm sorry. I mean, voted.
Uh, two thousand two hundred eighty-four.
It's always about two thousand.
All right, so then in November, we have eight thousand four hundred registered voters, and you had five thousand five hundred eighty-two that voted.
In.
In November of eighteen, okay? So the, the, the question is, I guess, my, I can buy the advanced ballots that for five hundred advanced ballot envelopes, it's right at three hundred dollars, okay, a little bit over when you get the shipping in there. But if we, if we mass mail out applications, the cost to mail those out is gonna be around probably nine thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars, okay? And that's if we do it. The other thing is, if that's the case, and you end up having the voters all send in, you're gonna have more than two thousand two hundred eighty-four vote, okay? Which means that you're gonna have to mail out more than, than that. So I guess I'm just, I wanna know what you guys' feelings were on that. I can go ahead and mail, or I can wait and see what secretary of state's office gets it done about the first of June. We've already have some people requesting that, you can go on to like Kansas, what is it, KS, vote, something, anyway, I don't know that, but. Anyway, it's not, it's separate from secretary of state's office, but it's a service out there that they recognize that people can go on, they can register to vote there, they can request advanced ballots there, and evidently, when you request an advanced ballot, they're allowing you to request it for August and November, because every time we get one, we get two.
Can we, can we do this by postcard? I mean, something that's, postage is less expensive? I don't know, you're the.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about sending out the, the applications. I mean, is what's costly, is send, actually send it out and have them come back instead of having to request it.
Have you ever done that before?
Done.
Have you ever?
Sent out a mass mailing for requesting advanced ballots, no.
Why would we, why would we change?
Because that's the, that's kind of the new norm right now. That's what I'm saying, they're really promoting advanced voting, but they won't go to an all male ballot.
You think that's the direction the secretary of state's gonna, you think there's a mandatory?
I don't think there's a mandatory, they are going to send it out, they said at our last call, they think. It's always like, here's what we're thinking, and then it's, we think.
Yeah, and I don't think, you need to drop the gun, um, what's, my suggestion would be business as usual, and the same with the state, again. I do think that, you know, when you tell the newspapers, advanced ballots are available, that's, that's a good way to disseminate.
And if I do tell the paper that advanced ballots are, there's, and they put in an application again, maybe they can make it a little bit bigger, because I think when we did that the last time, we didn't intend people to cut it out of the paper and send it in, and they are.
And that's why I suggested, if it's possible to send a postcard to all the voters of request the application if you want one, instead of sending the application, I'm just throwing out ideas to make it.
The postcards we sent out didn't already say that, because every other year, we do a mass mailing to get corrections and things on voters, and then the next year, we do an NCOA, which is a national change of address from the post office, so we alternate that. So this year, we sent out postcards to everybody, and I'll look at the back of that, but it may already have told them that.
So the bottom line is, if you have, if you have to do that, or if we decide that we need to do that, your postage budget's gonna need assistance.
Uh, that whole election budget is gonna need assistance, and it may anyway.
I mean, if we have to, we have to.
All right, well, I just kinda wanted to fill you out, because I'm sitting here, because if I need to order envelopes and things, I'm gonna have to be doing it, because you have a hundred and five just Kansas counties ordering envelopes. What are the other counties, what are the other states, you know? Does it say it?
It says, it gives a whole section on how to request an advanced ballot.
Okay, and they would've just got that.
It's already on.
Yeah.
So you just, they just got that, so maybe you guys could get it in the papers that, hey, if you wanna know how to request an advanced ballot, it's on the back of your declaration card that you got, and if you didn't get one, then you need to let us know because we got it back.
I'm assuming advanced ballots are probably gonna be a pretty big hit this year.
That's what they're, we're anticipating it to be a really, really.
Now, as far as the polling places.
They're still gonna have to be open.
Okay, they're not gonna, they're not gonna limit that, or you don't see any indication of?
No, if anything else, someone said something about they think that they want you to open more, but that, we can't do that because we don't have the equipment that we're required to.
We'll, we'll do that, we, we ordered our splash guards, right?
Yes, but I.
We're gonna have big tubs of sanitizer and.
Well, I know, we're gonna have to be able to get those, and you said you have masks for the board workers, or you don't have that many, you do have many. So I've already talked to them about that, but secretary of state's office said even with the splash guards, they think that we should make them wear face masks, so.
The, the volunteers?
Yes, the workers.
A heart of it, well.
So, I'm just saying, well, and that could be.
They need to have that option.
Okay, that could be, because look at the age of your board workers.
I agree.
And I mean, I hate to turn around and try, and trying to get younger ones is kinda hard anyway, but even if that, these guys are trained, they already know how the election works and things, other than now they're gonna have to use a ton of this with every person that comes through and, anyway.
Well, uh.
Those are just some thoughts I wanted to share.
Vote ends a core function of our government, and it's gonna happen, we just need to figure out a way to make sure.
Bob, do you need a technical session?
Yeah, fifteen minutes pending litigation.
And you, you need a technical session too.
I would like five minutes for personnel, please, with, okay, counselor.
Anything else before we go upstairs?
Uh, I'll make the motion for, uh, fifteen minutes, attorney-client with the councilor commissioners, uh, followed by. Let me do that. Five minutes.
You have to come out and do any of it.
Also, five minutes after that.
All favor. All right.
You got any information on the storm shelters?
I'll get the best.
Okay, so what time did you start?
Thirty-one, or, yeah, thirty-one, finished at forty-six.
Fifteen minutes.
That's when the door was shut.
We thought we needed five minutes more, but we didn't.
Okay, now that we've.
Go ahead, Bill.
Got to visit, you guys got anything else? You, you trying to talk something about the week leading, you wanna share any of that or talk about it?
It's just some little bit of information on the storm shelters.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, uh, there's no grants available for us. So I was working on the one for Sattenberg from the Hene Pacific Community Ties Grant, but we can't apply for it because we don't have a nonprofit number. Uh.
Okay, so basically, we're on our own.
Yeah.
FEMA, FEMA doesn't apply to us or anything.
The, which one?
FEMA.
The FEMA mitigation grants would, the, they go by the risk factor. So, if we was applying for something for a flood, we'd have a rugged shot at it over another county, but for a tornado, we wouldn't stand a chance against Greenwood County.
Just everybody's, everybody's.
We, yeah, we have had tornadoes, like, you know, in Atlantic County.
We're on, we're on.
Um, the gentleman, the, the cheapest bid, if we buy two, he will knock a thousand dollars off each one. If we buy three, he'll knock fifteen hundred dollars off each one.
Okay.
No, the Oklahoma shelter, the above ground.
Oh, the cheapest above ground.
Yeah, cheapest above ground. Uh, he would do, there's a delivery fee, a two thousand, he'd do just one delivery fee and bring them all at the same time, set all of them for one fee.
I don't still have those. Can you, can you send us a copy of those numbers? I think they're in the telephone, aren't they? Oh, go, they're there.
Yeah, the concrete is a thousand, that's just for material, but Mitchell's Cruises is busy, I don't know when they'd have time to do it.
Which one is that?
The second one now.
Blue Shelter, okay.
Yeah.
The ninety-six hundred.
And it'd take fifteen hundred dollars a piece off if you got three.
That drops it down to eighty-one hundred.
Yeah.
Twenty to twenty-six people, and would it be, uh, wheelchair accessible, right? Wow, what's the total? Be eighty-one hundred.
And then two thousand delivery fee, but that's.
Twenty-five.
How much?
Two thousand, that's.
For all of them?
Yeah, just one fee, and bring all of them, and set all of them, and.
Well, we don't have to side this today.
No, can you, can you get hard numbers from Terry and even us on the, on the discount?
Yeah.
Would you say three or more?
Yeah, we're looking, of course, we haven't even had the request from Carla yet, I think that's coming though. We've definitely had the one for Mildred, and, uh, we're thinking for Troya, you know?
But it's the same thing, we haven't had a request, and we haven't had any communication about when we would do it.
Yeah.
It's one of these Sattenberg too.
I'm probably, yeah, you're right, probably wanna pause.
But he said that they, they're working with Brian on a grant percent.
Percent.
Yeah. Uh, I'll, I'll find out, uh, from Troya, I'll call the, the membership, I, I think Carla was gonna give her, but they just haven't been able to meet, so.
What if, do you know if they would be able to do a grant for all of them, and we would be able to help manage it?
It's a twenty-five hundred to twenty-five thousand, and they said, they've already started the process, and you wanna do one a year.
Bob, on this storm shoulder stuff, like Lauren is talking about donating land in Mildred, if that were to be the case in any other place, um, isn't there some kind of legal consideration about perpetuity, like if the property changes hands, we wanna make sure the county still is allowed to have that storm shoulder, and it doesn't become just that person's private storm shoulder?
Depends of, the thing is, when he says donating the land, he's gonna deed it to the county, or if he's going to lease it. We'd wanna file something of record, so it's kinda like a water tower, you know? Some water towers aren't private property, it's just there's.
If we're gonna install that permanently, and I'm sure it would. They've just got some homework. Quick claim, quick claim deed a lot. Right.
I would suggest if we're gonna buy it, install it, and operate it, that we own the property.
Yeah. But I can, I can reach out to him too.
On the concrete for these, that was a thousand dollars, it was just for material, so if you were planning on doing these this year anytime soon, Mitchell's Cruises are pretty well tied up, if you need to get a price.
Be on concrete, huh?
Yes, that's how they anchor down. How much field? Yes.
Yeah, Terry, could you get some final numbers and maybe a few photos on it?
Mm-hmm.
And then send it to us, and we can, maybe, I'll reach out to Troya and Mildred and come up with a bill, and if you can, Carla.
Well, yeah, I'll see what I can do.
Where did that come from, that you had said that, or was that just?
About Carla.
About Carla. Have they had a meeting?
Drive was gonna have a meeting with them to discuss that, to discuss that, but then the meeting never happened because of this, the Corona thing.
With your, with your discussion about Sattenberg, what's the likely, did they say what the likelihood is that they're gonna get this grant?
She didn't.
Didn't know?
No.
Okay.
Okay, now let us know, Terry.
All right, and then part of it is telling me, do you get your free training from the Parks and Wildlife first?
I think, I think we should get the initial boat training first, um, we need to, we need to be able to use that. The flood season is upon us, so we, we need to have that, I don't know who they were gonna get the free training from, but I don't know if it's Fishing Game or.
I think Fishing Game was gonna do one, and this other one's from some company in Texas, and
no.
They didn't have any.
We need to get the initial training done.
They didn't have any, uh, firm numbers on how many people was even gonna take the training and, or how much extra equipment they needed, and they tried to set it up for the eleventh of May, I think it's pretty short.
I'm gonna put the cart before the horse there, we probably gotta get the initial trainings and, uh, one thing at a time.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
That's it.
Anything else?
Thanks, Terry.
Go, you wanna share anything else? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm excited.
I, I was just joking.
You sure?
I'm joking.
I sent you an email on, um, from, um, area agency on aging.
Oh. Well, that did make me think of something, as we start coming out of this deal, um, are you just gonna keep status quo with meals the way you're doing them, or are you gonna go back to a volunteer sort of a deal eventually?
I don't know, we may give it a couple of weeks and see if maybe, yeah, and just kinda see.
It's running smooth, it is now.
Yeah, evidently, I mean, yeah, I think you guys delivered to a few more people than what we were delivering to, but.
But I think some of that was, some of the power.
Okay, of course, they're taking frozen meals plus these meals too, right?
Some of them are, and she won't say who. And she, she told me, she sent me those papers and told me that if you divide it by seven, that tells you how many you're getting them. Well, I couldn't come up with that, I mean, I couldn't come up with a person, I mean, so I don't know.
So, is that, so state's not reimbursing for this, you do the.
I don't, I doubt it, but, I mean, the thing is.
Worried about that, right?
Well, no, but I mean, if you, if you're gonna pay for the frozen meals like she wants, it would be nice to know whether or not some of them are the same as what are already getting them. You know, so in that particular case, right?
Right.
So, well, I don't think that you should be paying for those and yours. We put out eighty meals a day at least, and I don't know when yes and no's, you know?
But they're not reimbursing, state's not reimbursing us for those.
They're not reimbursing us, no, we paid for it out of our service to the elderly.
Okay.
But I didn't understand her comment, that one of those said that there was thirty-five under the CMEL, and if I sent, and I said, well, what's CMEL versus HMEL? Well, the CMEL was the congregate site, and the HMEL is the home delivered. Well, where in Humboldt are they delivering meals to, that they're getting meals at a congregate site?
Did she, did she answer that, you asked and she didn't answer that?
I, I asked, and, and I haven't gotten a response from any of the staff that I asked her, 'cause I asked her, well, how many people is that? Six hundred and sixty-five.
So, you're gonna?
When, when the senior senator in Humboldt is operating normally, do they have meals brought in to congregants?
From here?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, we're feeding the congregate meals down at Humboldt, so I don't know who, I mean, I don't mind if they're getting them, don't get me wrong. You know, but we're providing them at no charge for ours, okay, to our employee, or to our citizen, okay?
A donation is suggested.
A donation is suggested, and some of them do donate, not, not very many, most of them need it probably for utility. A donation is suggested, and some of them do donate, not, not very many. Most of them need it probably for utilities or whatever, but the thing is, we're, we're already paying for their meal, and if they're getting frozen meals, and she wants you to pay for those meals, for those people, the same people, I don't know.
Duplications.
Well, is there any, is there any privacy requirement on telling us whether...
She will not tell us who.
If we're doubling up, then we...
She won't tell us who, because she said it's HIPAA. Well, ours, you have to know the name of the people to take the meals to them, so...
You gotta have the name and address to deliver it.
My volunteers are, yeah. Now, why they're getting them, I could, would think that would be HIPAA as to why they're getting them, but not, not who, you know, but she will not, she will not do that. And I have attempted to call our people and say, hey, are you, but I don't want them to think that that means they're gonna not get ours.
What's the number of possible duplication of services?
Well, there's four of that I'm aware of. Let me just say that, four people that I'm aware of.
In the whole county?
That I'm aware of.
That might be getting both meals.
That I'm aware of, yes. I don't know, I don't know about the rest of them.
Right.
And I can tell you later how I know that, but...
Yeah, well, yeah, you can, if you get any more on that, you can, you can email us, or if you get any more information from us.
Mitch?
Okay.
Oh, Bob? Very good, John. Press, you guys got anything else?
I'll be...
Brian?
We're good.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, will you, John?
All second, in all favor?
All right.